Good evening. It is now 6:08. Thank you for joining us for this important discussion, the first of four Town Hall meetings. Our meeting tonight was intended to be at Wilshire Baptist Church. I had a chance to spend the morning yesterday with Dr. George Mason and his congregation. Many of them are listening now, and we talked about this important Town Hall meeting. And like I said, the intent was to have it in person. However, with the increase of the Omnicom virus and the protocol at the church where they've instituted mask mandated masking, we decided that we would move these meetings here to City Hall. We all, we want to give you who are here in the audience a thank you for coming down, an opportunity to make your voice heard and to hear directly from our consultants. We're glad they are here in town in living color. And so we're looking forward to this conversation. This was going to be co-hosted, and they are all online. Some are here, Councilmember Blackman, as well as Councilmember Willis and Councilmember Ridley. We're going to co-host this with me at Wilshire, but they agreed to co-host with us virtually. And so I don't know a better day than the celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King, who stood for social justice and equality and equity to kick off our series of Town Hall meetings on this topic. So at this time, I'm going to go over to my colleague who's present with us, Councilmember Blackman, for a few remarks.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilman Thomas, Chairman Thomas, for bringing us all together to have this important discussion. We did have this briefing last month in our committee, and it's quite eye-opening. And you always have a feel, anecdotal data, but when you actually see the data, you feel compelled to do something. And I am glad that we are here to have a robust conversation, a community conversation about this. And I'm excited that we do have the presenters here that have the data, that have interviewed us all and sat and discussed it with us. And we have a few people in the audience, and I hope we get to hear from you as well. But I'm hoping that because this was going to be in Wilshire, that's kind of in, you know, the heart of East Dallas, that you'll be emailing me at districtnine@dallashall.com. And let me know your feelings, what you, when you saw this, when you read the data, how you felt, and what you feel compelled to do after you see this. And then let's start working together as a community in getting that done. So I want to commend you, Chairman, for putting this and getting us, getting this conversation, and for staff and the consultants for bringing it forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you as well. One, thank you for personally being here and making the sacrifice and commitment to physically be present. At this time, I'm hoping that Councilmember Willis is unmuted and can unmute herself since she's on WebEx. If she can, Councilmember Willis, if you would, open a remarks at this time.
Hello, I'm here.
We can hear you. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Good deal. All right. Well, I'm actually on a volunteer location, about to start a volunteer assignment, but definitely wanted to weigh in and just say that I'm very glad to have this Town Hall meeting kickoff, especially today, as Councilmember Thomas noted, and, you know, look forward to sharing the results with the community and having it be relaying the launchpad for discussion. So I won't belabor it any further, but thank you so much for including me.
Thank you for accepting the invitation. I think it sends a strong message to those who are watching us and those who are present, that council members who represent areas that have not historically been underrepresented feel the importance of being a part of this conversation. I think that's a strong message that's sent to those who are present and those who are listening. And this time, we want to hear from Councilmember Ridley, if you are able to unmute yourself at this time. Okay, we cannot hear you. So what we'll do is we will come back to you at the end of the presentation and allow you to make a few remarks. Hopefully, we can get that taken care of. So I'm going to kind of lay out our format for tonight, open remarks by myself and the council members. Next, I'm going to turn it over to our Department of Housing Director, David, who will introduce our consultants, our presenters. They will walk through the presentation. At the conclusion of their presentation, we will take questions from, or comments, comments, suggestions, questions from those who in the audience first. And then if Chris has not done so, Chris will post in the chat for individuals to go ahead and submit your questions in the chat. And that way, we can move right into that. At the conclusion of that, then we will discuss our plans for tomorrow night. So at this time, I turn it over to David Noguera, who is our Director of our Housing Department for the City of Dallas.
Thank you, Chairman Thomas. Good evening, everyone. I'm David Noguera, Director of Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization here with the City of Dallas. Our office led this body of work that we're going to be presenting with you, to you this evening. The three consultants to my left are the individuals that have been carrying out this work on our behalf. And that includes John Gilvar. John, if you want to just put on your mic and say hello.
Hello. Thank you. Glad to be here. Looking forward to the input we get from the community.
Great. Next, we have Christine Campbell.
Good evening. You'll be hearing a lot from me, so I'm going to keep this short.
And finally, we have Michelle Williams.
Good evening. Thank you for having us.
Great. All right. So Christine will be driving the presentation with others chiming in as appropriate. So with that, let me turn it over to Christine to walk us through the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, David, and thank you, Chairman, for having us here this evening. We're excited to be back in Dallas. It's much nicer down here than where it was where I left this morning. So thank you also for the fabulous weather. So today, we're here to talk about the comprehensive housing policy and the equity analysis. We had the pleasure of being able to present to the Housing Committee of the Council last month, and now we are at the point where we would like to hear from the community. So we're going to spend the majority of this meeting really focusing on, listening to you. So we're going to do a little bit about the purpose. We're going to give you a little bit about the background and history, and then we're going to focus on our draft recommendations. We made a series of recommendations to the Council of a Way Forward. But before those recommendations could be really moved upon, we needed to hear from the community. It is key that the community has a say, has some input into how all of this work is framed. We met with many of you before, I guess, earlier in the fall. And one of the things we didn't mention is that we would be coming back and that we would be sharing how your ideas, thoughts were actually framed within the report and framed within the series of recommendations. And then we're going to close out with some next steps, what you can do, how this is an ongoing process, and that the community input is a continuous process throughout the development of the plan and the policy. So the purpose of this piece of work was that we would, was for us to look at the comprehensive policy that was your primary tool for really guiding local affordable housing and addressing the local affordable housing crisis. So we needed to look at that policies and determine how we can make sure that it was being applied and developed and implemented in an equitable fashion. So the City of Dallas engaged us, the TDA, to analyze ways in which this, the comprehensive housing policy helped or hindered the city in reaching its racial equity goals. And we did this throughout the fall of 2021. And right now, we're doing this series of Town Hall meetings to obtain community feedback on the draft recommendations from that report. I'm hoping you've all had an opportunity to see the report, be able to look at versions for it, versions of it, and that we can really see that the body of work that went into providing this. So what we did, I want to give you a little bit of background and history as to how we got to these recommendations. So as you're thinking about your input, you have a little bit of that context. So what we did is we looked at how the historical context of inequity, which is common amongst, among a many cities throughout the country, actually applied here in Dallas. We looked at, we did, as you know, we did a series of listening sessions and interviews. We did tours of Dallas. We looked at some of the local development that was happening. We reviewed a lot of the data. We reviewed the reports, and we reviewed many of the plans. Many of you mentioned that there are several plans in some one way, shape, or form moving throughout Dallas. We looked at those, and we also looked at your current policies. We then identified the strengths of the policy as well as some gaps of that policy, and then we presented that report. So after we get this input from the community on the recommendations, one of the chairman's goals is to take this to get full council support and then mayoral approval on a way forward. So all of this is an ongoing process, but we know that this cannot move forward without active and ongoing continued engagement with the community. So let's talk a little about our starting point. When we began the project, we reviewed a lot of the existing local research about the affordable housing crisis in Dallas. And we learned that the barriers to safe, quality, affordable housing are much higher for Black and Brown Dallas residents than they were for our white residents. For example, Latinx residents are almost twice as likely than white residents to pay more than 30% of their income toward housing or live in substandard housing. Black residents are also much more likely to experience these housing issues. White residents are almost twice as likely as Black residents to own their own homes. Latinx residents are also lag far behind residents in home ownership rates. The median home value for white households that own their own homes is more than three times higher than the median value for either Black or Latinx households. And we also looked at local studies describing Dallas's great north-south divide, as many people call it. This slide provides a glimpse into the huge gaps in wealth and economic opportunity between northern and southern Dallas. And this was found by one of your local researchers from Southern Methodist University. We also reviewed reports describing the roots of these disparities and how these roots that shaped policies, next slide, oh, I'm sorry, not yet, shaped policies from just after the Civil War until very recently. This slide shows a few quotes about those roots and the impact of city policies. So decades of disinvestment in Black and Hispanic neighborhoods have culminated in substantial differences in basic housing conditions, neighborhood quality, and access to amenities. The indicators in this theme demonstrate deep disparities along racial, ethnic lines, particularly in access to housing and housing affordability and services, disparities that have worsened since the baseline year. So as we're looking at these recommendations, we want to look at some of these issues and some of these causes of disparities and see what we can do to actually address them. Decades of redlining policies to promote northward development, urban renewal initiatives, and construction of highways and other infrastructure running through the middle of historically Black and Hispanic neighborhoods have left a lasting imprint on the economic geography of southern Dallas. So if this is the case that we are seeing, of what we're seeing, how do we address these issues? What is our vision for Dallas? How do we move this forward? Take a pot of economic development and spread it evenly across the city to all 14 districts, from the have-nots to the have-a-lots. So what we're saying is how do we look at all 14 districts and address those needs and meet those unique needs in a unique way so that we are able to uplift all of Dallas as we are moving forward? So when we met with the City Council, we made some recommendations about some proposed action in terms of decisions that the city needed to make. And what we heard was resounding that we wanted to move forward this way. So one of the things that the city really wants to do is create a strategic roadmap that sets a course towards redressing these racial divides. That the city leaders want to really address the deficit in basic infrastructure upon which development of mixed-income neighborhoods depends. That the city leaders want to actively work to level the playing field that has been tilted in favor of predominantly white areas by making significant investments throughout Dallas. And that the city wants to actively seek input from the community to develop a mission, vision, and goals to achieve affordable housing that is equitable. The city asked us for a set of recommendations on how changes in this approach to affordable housing can make Dallas a more equitable city to live in. By more equitable, we mean that the color of your skin or the zip code of where you live does not define you, that you are able to live and thrive in your community without, not because, and it's not based on your race or your zip code. So that's what we mean by equity, and that's what we want to focus on, is how do we move forward? So let's start looking at what some of these draft recommendations are. The first recommendation is that we create a housing policy vision statement articulating how the affordable housing playing field will be leveled for all racial groups and across the north-south divide. So here, I want to stop for a second and ask for your input. I want to start thinking about what would a vision look like for the City of Dallas? Pardon me? No, it's not rhetorical. I want to hear from you.
And you can come up to the mic and answer the question, Blake. And if you would, just introduce yourself.
Thank you.
Chris, is the mic on? Is it red? Is it on?
I'll push. All right. Yeah, good evening, everybody. Excuse my dress. I just dropped off my daughter at college in Austin. My name is Jerry Hawkins. I'm the Executive Director of Dallas Truth, Racial Healing and Transformation. It's an initiative of the W.K. Kellogg Foundation. I first want to just say thank you all for your work. Second, thank you, Councilman Casey and Councilwoman. So I am, you know, doing this work actively in the city and, you know, excited for the work to move forward. But I think there's some really important steps that has to be taken before we move forward. I heard you use that. Part of it is what we call like the first principle of TRHT, which is accurate and full retelling of what happened. And that includes the whole truth. I think some of that is, you know, missing, obviously, in the presentation. You know, I'm sure it's a summary, but we have to do that, you know. And that means that the City of Dallas has to be culpable of some things, unfortunately, you know. The City of Dallas had a charter, in its city charter from 1931 to 1968, that said that Black people, very specifically, could not live with white people. That charter created policies. That policy created economic downturn for the Black community that hasn't been addressed ever, anywhere, ever, not even acknowledged by the city. I think some acknowledgement, you know, even maybe an apology resolution, whatever has to be part of this plan. So there was a really important step that was taken that I saw that we need to do as part of this plan, too. It may take a little bit more time. But Ta-Nehisi Coates, he wrote an article in The Atlantic. It's called "The Case for Reparations." And it wasn't about slavery. It was about contract lending. And he focused on Chicago. And this qualitative essay, which is also part of this story that we're missing, the qualitative data, talked about this policy and how it literally economically disenfranchised this one man in his old neighborhood. Well, Sandy Darity from Duke, social equity, he's an economist, and his students, his grad students, actually quantified that qualified essay. From 1970 to, I think, 1950 to 1970, that 20-year span, he found out that the Black community in Chicago, under one policy, contract lending, lost $3 to $4 billion of wealth. We haven't done that type of work yet, you know what I mean? And so it's going to be very hard for us to move forward with a housing policy that don't even address what happened, right? So we're going to, even, you know, even though we start at a policy that may bring some equity for some of the current data, folks are still starting at a pace that's far beyond, you know. So I think, you know, those two things are what I'm thinking about first, like the acknowledgement and culpability of the city, because I just named one policy. That's the charter. But there's so many other policies that we haven't even talked about that also have economic consequences. The second is also the research that needs to be done to talk about the economic, the true economic disparities that were caused by housing policies. And we haven't touched, we haven't touched that at all, not at all. There's no research. There's no report for that. I know because we do that work on a daily basis, not in Dallas.
I would hope you get a chance to read this report because that's where we started. We agree with you that if you do not acknowledge the historical policies, systems in place, you cannot move forward. And so that is the foundation of our recommendations. We may not have gotten it all because we don't live here.
Yeah.
But we absolutely agree with you 100% that those qualitative stories provide the flavor to the work. It's the foundation of the work. And so I want you to hear that these recommendations are based on what we learned from the history. It may not have been the full telling, as you're saying.
Yeah.
But because it's super important, we saw some of those policies. We saw some of the current deeds that say that Black people can't own property.
For sure.
You know, so those are currently.
But there are some massive, massive things that like, I'm just going to list these three, and then I'm going to sit down. One, Dallas had the country's largest low-rise housing development in the country for housing projects. That's, you're talking about economics, right? One of the first middle-class segregated Black neighborhoods, Hamilton Park, right? That was designed for Black people to live separate from white folks, which meant that businesses and all of those things couldn't be built, right? And now we have what I'll call still, that lives here today, but not in name, right, is a city, a major city, and one of the few major cities without economic enclaves that are ethnic, right? So, you know, Dallas purports to be a world-class city, but world-class cities have Little Italy's and, you know, Chinatowns. We have the Arts District, Design Districts, right? So that's, I'll leave those there. Thank you all.
Actually, I don't want you to sit down yet because I want to hear your vision. What do you want to see? I really agree with you that the historical piece needs to be fully addressed, but I also want to know what you want to see.
So let me tell you some ideas. So the City of Evanston did something really cool, right? And it was about housing. We don't have this law yet, but the state of Illinois passed marijuana law. And the City of Evanston used some of that, the tax money that they'll gain from that marijuana law, very specifically to address Black folk, Black residents who are living in their district for housing benefits. So that's an example. I think also for gentrification, we need to think about the quality and the culture of our communities. So if we don't want to gentrify neighborhoods like, neighborhoods like Elm Thicket that are being gentrified right now, and neighborhoods even in South Dallas, we need to guarantee that seniors at least can stay in their homes without raising their taxes and maybe even thinking about a very, and I dare say radical move, but it'll be humane and moral move, is to pay for their housing. At least, you know, guarantee that they can stay in their homes when McMansions are being built around them. So those are two examples of a vision I see where we're addressing those issues.
That's exactly what the kind of things we want here. Thank you so much. Sir!
Okay, there, I see it. My name's Darrell Baker, and in order of priorities, I'm a founding member of a group called Fair Share for All Dallas. And our purpose is to ensure and demand that affordability is available throughout the city, not just in our part of town. I'm also a member of the Housing Policy Task Force, and I'm also a member of Councilman Casey Thomas's Resident Leadership Committee that he formed when he first came into office with the sole express purpose of hearing our voices on a district-wide level. What's been missing in this particular housing policy, and with my background in planning, is a needs inventory and a needs assessment. We say that affordable housing is needed, but we haven't taken the necessary step of saying where it's needed. We can assure you that in District 3, we don't need anymore. We can also assure you that you don't build affordability in areas that are already affordable. That makes absolutely no sense. So in light of the fact that we also have a regional housing policy, affordable housing policy, that's been completely ignored by our Housing Finance Corporation, what we've ended up doing is creating a scenario where Dallas is the affordable housing builder for the region, which means even worse than NIMBYism, not in my backyard, is that all the good stuff gets built in the north and in the suburbs, and the outhouse, for lack of a better reference, is here in the southern sector. And so people who go to work every day are obliged to make 80-mile round trips to low-wage, no-benefit jobs. COVID has shown us that these so-called unimportant jobs are extremely important. And the fact that these people who, again, go to work every day, now put their lives at risk, are forced to make these very long commutes that are expensive, given the price of gasoline and transportation. And there's no way that in a place, let's say, like Frisco, where the average house is about touching in the $400,000 range, and there's pitiful little affordable housing opportunities there, and through practices that for affordability are even worse than redlining, which is exclusionary zoning, there's no way that their councils even allow this as a possibility. These things have to be addressed because Dallas can't afford to be the housing, the affordable housing provider for the region, and everybody else gets a pass on it in light of the fact that we haven't adopted regional housing policy. So that being said, by council, district, we have to say what's available as affordability currently, what's needed. And by council, district, say District 10, you need 1,000 affordable units. District 3, you have this surplus of units. And unlike carbon credits, we're not going to exchange these. We just ensure that we allow things like green lining so that we can get decent streets, high-speed internet, dependable electricity, water and sewer services, get our garbage- get our garbage picked up on time. That doesn't seem to be as big a problem north of where I live. My house currently would be worth about three times more if it was geographically the same distance from downtown, south, as it would be north. In a world-class city, these sorts of things should not happen. These sorts of things are not acceptable. And so, we're wanting council to step up to the plate and admit that, again, we don't need any more affordable housing, especially on the programs like Lytech, built in the southern sector, when the northern part of the city desperately needs affordable housing. And I can personally, thanks to my level of Spanish now, assure you that those people, that those other people talk about, are absolutely great neighbors. They will come and see you in the hospital. If you have a flat on the side of the highway, they are more likely to stop and help you than those better people they'd like to think of themselves as being. So, in the spirit of the truth-telling that this started out as, these are some of the things that absolutely have to be part of this improved part of our housing policy.
What do you believe you do need in your district? I hear what you don't need.
We, we need the high-end, believe it or not.
You need what?
We need the high-end. What we don't have in my district are luxury and high-end housing options. We absolutely thoroughly need that. With the data that you just showed, we're sixty-five percent of the population and landmass, and we contribute ten percent to the tax base. This black woman, I can assure you, we are not proud of that. We don't tout that as an advantage, and we can do better, and we want to do better. Look at things other than income to determine how much a neighborhood is worth. Where I happen to live, we'll have a lot of retirees. We don't have very high salaries, but we have probably a higher net worth than people who make ten times more money than we do because we live in paid-for housing. We have zero debt. Our kids are gone, and we see grandkids when we want to see them. We can afford a vacation, most people can't. Yet, and still, grocery stores will tell us that your income is too low and we can't come there. But we are reluctant to think that anybody who's in an industry that operates on a two-percent profit margin really knows what they're doing. We're reluctant to think that an industry where the standard is, if you're an executive, you get benefits and a great salary. If you're the checker or the stalker, or if you clean up in a grocery store, you don't get enough hours at the end of a full month of working to pay the rent. This makes no sense. And for them to come into our community where we're in a food desert and tell us, well, your income isn't high enough, and, well, yeah, your house is paid for, but we don't look at that. Well, you should. And you're operating on an antiquated business model that really makes no sense.
Thank you so much, thank you so very much. Appreciate your feedback.
Okay.
Appreciate your input.
Before we go to our next audience member, since we're doing Q and A, I want to go ahead and have Councilmember Ridley, who's on, to just make some, some, some comments, remarks. I'm gonna say something, then we'll go back to our Q and A. So, Councilmember Ridley, if you can unmute yourself. Oh, we see you, go for it, buddy.
Thank you, Chair Thomas. I really appreciate the opportunity that you have accorded me to co-host this important Town Hall meeting tonight. You know, it was a revolutionary development when the city adopted the Comprehensive Housing Policy several years ago. But it didn't go far enough because it didn't address the issue of equity. It addressed our needs for affordable housing, but it didn't highlight the fact that that burden of unmet housing needs falls predominantly upon racial and ethnic minorities. We first have to acknowledge the system that created that condition before we can address it, as the first speaker tonight clearly mentioned. To do that, we need to add to the housing policy a vision to coordinate our thirteen disparate housing programs so that they can pull together and achieve what we as a community want to achieve to create housing opportunities for those who have been passed by. We also need a method to address the policies that promoted segregation and inequality over history. We also need goals to increase equity in housing distribution by reducing racial disparities. And we need specific strategies for addressing the deep-rooted inequities in our current housing market. If we can address those issues, and I think we're going a long way towards doing that by obtaining citizen input through these Town Hall meetings, then we will have gone a long way toward addressing the housing inequities in the city of Dallas. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, very well said. I think it's important, that is known, especially amongst the committee. We'll be having the full council briefing, hopefully, tentative date, it's March the second. Hopefully, we've got that to the city manager and we can get that on the agenda. But those council members who are on the Housing and Home Solutions Committee, where, I think there was a consensus that we all see there's a need for this and to make these adjustments to our policy. I'll make one statement because I think it's important. I want to remind everyone that this racial equity audit of our comprehensive housing policy is just one piece of our citywide racial equity plan. We're in the process now, and I believe over the next month or two, there'll be more community engagement on the citywide racial equity plan. And so, while this is critically important, and we're not gonna discount that, we want to emphasize the fact that this one piece of a larger citywide racial equity plan, and we'll do a similar type of engagement, that's gonna be led by our Chair Schultz of our Workforce Education Equity Committee. I'm the vice chair, and so, we'll be working together, but she will be leading and setting forth the path. And tentatively, we're looking at sometime this summer, being, bringing that to the council for, for approval. So, I just wanted to make sure everyone understands that. And so, now, we'll go back to our Q and A.
Next two recommendations here are about creating a comprehensive citywide strategic roadmap, coordinating the policy's array of tools while leveraging community partnerships to address the very different needs for change from one area to the other. So, this acknowledges that, that each of the communities are different, yet there needs to be some degree of coordination. And we have a strong belief that that kind of work cannot happen if we're not working on the same vision. If we're all not trying to get to the same place together, if we don't have a picture of what the whole is, it's hard for us to develop the roadmap that, or establish some really smart goals and objectives that allow us to attain that vision. So, those next two recommendations really lean on us developing a common vision of where we want to go. And when I talk about a common vision, I'm not saying that all fourteen districts are gonna look the same, but that we've taken into account the population, the culture, the dynamics, the demographics, the amenities of each community, and what each, how each community and how their citizens can thrive. And that's what that community looks like. So, what you see in one is not gonna necessarily be what's seen in the other because the needs and qualities of those communities are different. So, when you think about those needs and qualities of these individual communities, what are some of the things that you want to ensure are part of those, part of that vision?
Good evening. How you doing, Councilmember Thomas? My name is Edwin Robinson, I am a member of District Six. Usually, you all use to see me in a suit, sorry for the sweatpants and the hat tonight. But to the point of what we need, I agree with the gentleman who just spoke. I don't believe that the city should be involved in necessarily creating a whole lot more affordable housing. What I do believe the city should be involved in is infrastructure. And I believe the city should do everything in their power to focus their efforts, particularly their funding resources, on developing the infrastructure, particularly in those areas that have been highlighted in the plan. I believe by a sincere investment in infrastructure, we're talking about roads, we're talking about bridges, we're talking about sewers, we're talking about high-speed internet. We're even then talking about the human infrastructure in those areas, right? So, we're talking about access to daycare, access to home health care. We're talking about transportation resources. If the city focused their attention on the infrastructure of the areas that have been historically pushed out, I, I, I suppose, from history and from watching development in other places around the country, that it will open up the opportunities for development, it will open up the opportunities for jobs, it will open up the opportunities for economic resources, and we will all see the lift that comes to those areas. I think if we were to focus our energy too specifically, matter of fact, specifically at all, on building more houses and building more homes, I think we miss an opportunity to invest in the things that will actually cause a watershed moment in our city, not just for now, but for generations to come. Thank you very much for all of your hard work, have a great night.
Thank you so much for that feedback. That is, I think those are some really key points because building and revitalizing communities isn't just about the units of housing, it is about that infrastructure so that, again, communities can thrive.
Good evening. My name is Gregory Demas, I live in District Three. I know this is mainly about housing, but one thing I would like to see from a unified part of Dallas is that we don't need another payday-like loan in the southern sector, south of Thirty, or south of the Trinity. From an economic thing, I think to me, I know the gentleman said we don't need no more affordable housing. To me, District Three, District Eight, all of them, don't need no housing, period. We need jobs out there. So, I would like for the city to push the effort with new companies that's looking to move to the central part of the U.S. I-20, between Bonneview, all the way down to Duncanville Road. To me, I guess I can just stop at the City Board of Dallas, to where it should be almost like 114, where you got companies, offices, and stuff up and down that way. We don't need no more housing out there at all, I think we got enough of it. I think we need to try to bring the economic stuff up, and then I believe, once you do that, the grocery stores will come.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, the next three rec, oh, please.
I just want to share a, a resource that may help, too, because there's something that will stop like a unified plan, and that is kind of the appraisership system of, of homeownership. So, there's a Brookings Institute report called "The Devaluation of Black Homes". And in this report, it says that once a, a community turns ten percent, there's a massive move out of other residents. The other thing it also says is that those houses are devalued by fifty percent just because the residents are African-American. There is nothing a housing plan can do to address that if that is not handled by a, a, a government policy because that becomes very arbitrary. We see all of the kind of interpersonal anecdotes of appraisers coming in and seeing black people in the homes, or knowing that this is a black neighborhood and saying that this house is this, and then we put a white person in the house, or put some white pictures, and then it's something else. That is an institutional, structural issue that is handled on an individual level by appraisers, right? There, it is no way that can be handled without like policy, particularly for, for black residents. And I'm just saying that that report, the Brookings Institute, "Devaluation of Black Homes", is a, is a valuable resource for, for this discussion. Your mic's not on.
I, I, thank you. I was just asking about that. Are there people online?
If you like, there is at least one person who's already submitted a question, and Chris can read that question for us.
Yes, please.
Chris, if you could read that question, or if you choose to unmute that individual, then you can.
Yes, we have a question from Mrs. Lee McKinney.
I think I'm muted now, is that right?
Yes, we can hear you, Ms. McKinney.
Okay, all right, thank you all very much. First of all, I want to say thank you to Casey for having this forum tonight, and also for clarifying the racial equity piece versus the equity in housing relative to race. I believe that the burden of racial equity is not solely the issue for the housing department. If you look in the equity indicators under neighborhoods and infrastructure, they say that housing is one of the issues that we are woefully lacking in, doing better, but need to continue to focus on that. So, I think we're talking about two separate things. We're talking about the housing piece of racial equity, and I suppose how housing can play a role in getting us there and increase our equity indicator score. To answer your question about the, the vision that you think we should be looking at, or what some of us think the vision might be, one of the things that we get lost on is there are so many valid issues that need to be faced when it comes to racial equity in Dallas. And you've heard them from all the speakers who've come up already. And we've got to figure out a way how to do that. For me, housing is a big piece of racial equity, and the comprehensive policy should reflect in some way what that is. So, if I had a vision for the housing policy, it would be to eliminate the patterns of segregation and concentrations of poverty in all of the city-supported housing programs, and to the extent we can impact the laws that would impede us in these areas. I think the vision then should be carried out by a mission that says what we will do, why we will do it, how we will do it, who will do it, and when we will do it. I believe it's important to address all of the concerns that have been raised, and I think we can do that if we talk about what needs to be done and why we need to do it and how, and so on and so forth. So, my vision would be to stick with what they got already, but make it the vision of the whole comprehensive housing policy, and then go through all of the other steps after that. Thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate all that you all are doing. The recommendations are outstanding, and I am hopeful that in articulating a vision to us and us developing a mission, that we will take all eleven of your recommendations into consideration.
Thank you so much. That, that is extremely helpful and very useful feedback and information and input into this process. Not only because you agreed with our recommendations, but I think that they're strong, too. Other comments, but I want to move on to a couple of the other recommend, before I move on to the other recommendations, but I want to see if there are any more comments or suggestions for, for the vision and, and mission that we're talking about right now.
We have one, one individual via WebEx, Mr. Tyler Wayne.
Everybody, yeah, this is, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
This is Tyler Wade from District Two. Really enjoyed listening in so far. The comment that I made was basically, to that vision piece, I think the supply of affordable housing options, the key of it being affordable, and making sure that there are enough Dallasites that make money to be able to afford those options, right? You can't solve the problem by creating a greater stock of housing options if the rent is fourteen hundred dollars a month and there aren't people that have jobs that can help them to be able to afford a fourteen hundred dollar a month rent.
Thank you so much for that. Other opinions on the vision before we move to recommendations? Other opinions on the vision before we move to recommendation four?
Yes, ma'am, we have a comment from Mr. Randy Patterson. Mr. Patterson, you're muted.
Yes, this is Randy Patterson. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate what one of the speakers has already said about affordable housing. And if you continue to raise the senior citizen property taxes, they will continue to be pushed out, and I hope that that gets addressed.
Thank you so much for that. So, our next recommendation was to strengthen linkages between the housing policy and neighborhood revitalization strategies that leverage infrastructure improvements, economic revitalization, and mixed-use master planning to build a foundation for increasing generational wealth in historically black and brown communities. One of the things we know that white communities have that historically black and brown communities don't have is that opportunity for generational wealth, that passing on the wealth from one generation to the next, partially because of historical laws and policies that had been in place that prevented black and brown people from owning property. Therefore, they didn't have anything to pass on. But now that we know this, how do we address this? And that is a question, okay? Please.
I think the greatest question to this is how do we pay for it? And I think the answer is simple. There are, the city just applied for $337 million in infrastructure dollars that they plan to focus on lowering I-30 and creating greater access to entertainment districts. I think that's a misuse of funds, understanding this most recent racial equity audit. Any federal money or government money that we give for infrastructure should all be focused towards this plan, any money. And that is any money that we apply for, for the American Rescue Plan, any money that comes from the state. It should all be focused on this plan and this plan alone, no other plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a really important question too, because it talks about generational wealth. So, I've been in Dallas for 11 years, and I moved to Dallas mainly for one reason. And it was, I'm gonna tell you just a really quick personal story. So, my mother and father were both raised in housing projects in Chicago, and they did everything that they were supposed to do. My mother became a teacher and educator in Chicago Public Schools, and my father was a Cook County sheriff. They bought a home in South Chicago in a community called Inglewood. I'm sure you all are familiar with that, you've heard it on the news. My father died in 2007, and my mother no longer wanted to live in this house. She asked any of her children, do they want to live in this house? Well, none of us took her up on that offer, even though this is a beautiful little brick house, because the appraisal value of this house was worth less than what they bought it for. And they paid a $400 mortgage on it. You hear what I'm saying? Like, so, there has to be something that addresses that issue, right? All of my family who were born in Chicago now live in Texas, looking for, not necessarily opportunity, because these are educated folks. They had, they're looking for a way to have a stable housing in a place where they could, you know, pass out a house that it is worth something to their children. And because they are black or because they live in a black neighborhood, that is almost impossible for most black folks. So, I think that you have to think about like, what does it mean for generational wealth to be passed down? And how impossible or hard that is for black residents who live in a black neighborhood that is already devalued by the city, right? Last thing I'll say about that, the city of Dallas offered grocery store $2 million to move to South Dallas. None of those grocery stores took them up on that offer. We have to ask why, you know? So, I think we have to think about the addressing of those generational wealth issues, because it's going to be very hard to even build that without addressing that.
I do have a question.
For sure.
Is there a municipality or a county that is doing this right? Because I agree with you, where you see an imbalance of appreciation in property. And if you assume that your property doesn't appreciate, then you are losing.
For sure.
You are going. So, how does it, how do you create a balance of? And is there anybody doing it right? Is there a set of policies? Because I know that Brookings one where they changed the photos out and they showed how it totally swung the other way.
For sure. There are some municipalities who are thinking about it, including, you know, folks like Louisville, who's had like a citywide racial equity plan and some others. But I want to like talk about the real important part about that, which is addressing the issue of valuation and what is important and what is not, right? So, Ohio State, they came and did an overlay of our redlining maps. And I don't know if you all seen that report as well. And they overlay redlining maps with the biological maps and like affecting asthma and all of those things. And what they found was that even though, you know, we had this redlining map and we were trying to address it through some housing policy, we could not. And they said this, that redlining map has to be addressed through a very direct policy of like giving folks money. And that's a hard proposition to think about. But the pandemic proved that if you, you know, and there's tons of research around it, that the influx of money, direct money to people, change the poverty level, right? So, I think that and valuation of actual neighborhoods, that could be historical valuation. For instance, like the city owns the Wainita Craft House, which is, you know, valued very low, but it is a world-famous house, right? If we change the value proposition of neighborhoods and what's in, the assets in neighborhoods, maybe we can think about that, so.
Thank you so much for that. So, I'm going to run through these recommendations and then I'm going to--
Come on down there. Then she's going to go through all of the recommendations, then we'll do Q and A.
Okay. Ms. Blackman, to answer your question directly, I had a recent experience with that, with realtors. If taking down black portraits of your family on the wall will make a difference to a seller, you can tell, the owners should be able to tell the realtor that I don't need to sell my house that badly if you're going to sell it to somebody who thinks that way. And if this is an important issue for me, then we can un-sign my contract with you. It's the hit 'em in the pocket book of philosophy here. So, yes, this happens, but it happens because we allow it. And when we stop allowing it, and this is basically what I refer to now as the Lorena Bobbitt Charm School graduate mentality. Reporting abuse to the police didn't really get her good results. She literally took matters into her own hands, and all of a sudden, the police paid attention. So, we're at a drastic point in this city for that sort of a thing. So, that's, it's a reciprocal thing. As citizens, we're stepping up and we're participating. We're making our voices known or heard. We can only hope that elected officials like yourself will listen and help undo some of the damage that was done due to these policies. Thank you for that. So, as you can see, the fifth recommendation that we made was that to add a goal around rebating the enormous infrastructure deficit that has persisted in Southern Dallas in generations. And so, we know that that is a key element. If you don't have the infrastructure, water, electricity, high-speed internet, that you cannot build and develop. It's not an attractive part. So, we know that needs to be done. The next goal we talk about is utilizing an all-14 district model to combat NIMBYism across all areas of Dallas. If you decide that and have a vision, what we're recommending is that you lift all at the same time. You find the resource, you have the plans in place to move them all forward at the same time. What tends to happen is we start building where the resources are available, the resources are available in those communities that have resources. So, it ends up in this unending cycle. So, our recommendation is that you look at the needs of all 14 of your communities and make a plan and attach the resources to ensure that you're lifting all parts of the community together. Our next recommendation is around a revenue stream. What you've all been talking about too is that there needs to be a dedicated revenue stream that is scaled to the magnitude of the Dallas affordable housing shortage. So, that you are, any strategy that you're developing, you have a revenue stream that's going to actually allow you to do the development that is necessary. Now, as we all have been talking about, we know that it's not just about building units of housing. It's the overall economic revitalization of these communities. We want to expand and refine existing housing programs, existing policies, to create a comprehensive, integrated strategy for preventing displacement during neighborhood revitalization. Too many of our communities have experienced gentrification, and then they have that, oh, my God moment. Everyone who used to live here no longer lives here. We're saying, as you're putting your plan together, work towards preventing this displacement. Work to allow, figure out ways and strategies so people can stay in their communities, that they're not priced out of their communities, that they're able to thrive where they want to be. And the other recommendation is that we believe that all city staff, policies, and public, and the public at large, need to learn about racial equity and what it means in the context of affordable housing and community development. Racial equity, equity does not feel fair, because what we are doing is we're undoing the bad policies that worked against a good segment of our population, and we're creating new policies that actually favor that part of the community that had been at a disadvantage for a long time. So, it's not just about suddenly getting to equality, but it's undoing the trauma, undoing the damage of the bad policies and creating policies that benefit the parts of the population that have historically been held down. And our next recommendation is to strategically utilize low-income housing tax credit financing in both high-opportunity areas and where areas where there are low-poverty rates and distressed areas with higher rates. So, the lightest need to be done strategically, not just where there's availability. We need to look at how are we developing the communities in a balanced way that makes sense. And the other thing we were talking about earlier today is not only do we need to use them, we need to be able to provide the support and the training so that they can be used effectively. And our last recommendation is that the housing policy should help dispel the myths about affordable housing that fuel NIMBYism. There is data and facts and examples across this country of where, when you have done this type of investment, property values have gone up for all, and people have been able to stay up, stay in their communities. So, what we want to do is decrease that if we build this type of housing in our community, not in my backyard, that we're somehow damaging. What we're seeing, and there's evidence out there that shows that building in this way actually raises the foundation for all. So, those are the 11 recommendations that we made. And what I'd like to do now is open the floor for what questions you may have and what do you want your city leaders to know?
We have one online. Chris, if you could go ahead and cue that one up?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Oh, great. My name is Evelyn Mayo, and I'm a resident in District 1, but I'm also involved with various neighborhood-led advocacy efforts in the city of Dallas. And I just wanted to comment, I think, on recommendation eight. If you could go back a slide or two. Yeah, to create a comprehensive, integrated strategy for preventing displacement during neighborhood revitalization. This jumps out in the context of Forward Dallas to me and the upcoming comprehensive plan for neighborhoods in the city. With one of the major issues, which I know the Planning Department is working on, is figuring out a path to policy for these neighborhood-led plans. Because the city of Dallas, unlike other cities in Texas, does not have a community engagement resolution or any kind of clear metric around what is a successful level of participation? What is a meaningful level of involvement that we can say a neighborhood is behind this policy or behind this issue? And so, I think that's something that the city of San Antonio has, and it's something the city of Dallas should very much consider and the Coalition I'm a part of will be working on this. But I think not providing a path forward for neighborhood-led land use plans is a significant misstep in saying that the city is serious about taking a neighborhood seriously when it comes to determining what is best for them and what is the best way to prevent displacement. So, thank you for y'all's time and thank you for hosting this forum, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I was just going to say the same thing. If, we also have another question online, but if anyone here wants to respond to, I believe it was 6 through 11 or 5 through 11, feel free to come up to the mic. You can line up a few feet behind one another. Otherwise, we'll just take questions online. Ms. Lee McKinney?
Oh. I think that when we get down to the two questions that they have there about what do you want city leaders to know? And I think, for me, it would be that we are weary of going over the same thing over and over again. All of the things that have been mentioned here tonight have been talked about before. The actual housing policy in its entirety was approved by the city council and then found to have more challenges and issues than anybody would have imagined. And so, we've had to amend it more times than anybody would have imagined. And now, your audit of the policy says that it's almost, you know, when you cite 138 pages out of 169, says to me that it almost doesn't have anything to do with addressing the issues that it ought to be addressing. So, we need the city leaders to know that we want to hear from them based on your audit. When will they come to us and say, "We have heard what the auditor has said. This is what we're going to do. We will get back with you within three months, six months, with a plan for how we will address these recommendations, who will address these recommendations, what we will do to address the recommendations, and give you a progress report at some period of time." For too long, we have had the equity indicators. They've been less than stellar for a long time. And we say we're going to do this and we're going to do that, but nobody comes back to check to see whether we did any of that. And so, for 30 years that I've lived in Dallas, the condition continues to be the same because there is no accountability. If you don't inspect what you expect, nothing is going to happen. So, we have to give some explicit direction to the leaders as to how we will respond to your audit and when we will respond and who will respond and all of the things that make moving forward possible. We've got study upon study, and I know you've seen all of those. All the things, as I said before, have been discussed a million times. And everything from the cocktail lounge to the city-county building. So, none of this is new, infrastructure, all that stuff. None of this is new. We need to now move away from what is the problem to how do we solve the problem? Who will solve the problem? When we will solve the problem? How we will solve the problem? And what kind of progress reports will be made on solving the problem? The leaders have to take on that responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. I assure you that this is not an exercise of frutility. I have dedicated, committed a lot of time, research to leading this effort to make sure that all of those things, and hopefully if you haven't had a chance to read the report, you will get a chance to read the report in detail. There are some specifics that were not included in the presentation that in the report, and this report can be found at dallashousingpolicy.org. Dot com? DallasHousingPolicy.com. If you have not read the report, those of you who are present or listening online, go to DallasHousingPolicy.com and the entire report is there. There will be accountability, there will be action steps taken, and there will be regular updates that we will share with the general public.
My name's Ken Montgomery. I am a resident in District Nine. Councilman Thomas, thanks for hosting. Councilwoman Blackman, of course, thank you for hosting. And Councilman Ridley and Councilwoman Willis for being on. I saw Councilwoman Mendelson on earlier, don't know if she is, but I really appreciate that level of engagement. I suspect my comments will be a little more tactical, maybe than some of the things that we talked about, but so far, but I'm going to hit on item four and item seven. Item, so overall, I think that we would be well-served with an increased emphasis on single-family homeownership in particular. We have tools in the toolbox that seem to do a reasonably good job on multifamily. Certainly, we have a ways to go, but those tools are available. So on the single-family side, that seems to be where we kind of get caught up in the, where the pipeline gets stuck. And I'm going to go backwards from what I originally thought because I know why it's stuck. And one of the major issues that we have is funding. And there, as far as I know, there are no general funds that go directly to housing outside of support for the Housing Department. And our budget from HUD is roughly $30 million, give or take, WIB. So that's our, that's primarily the funding that we use for our housing issues. And the second thing is, I would suspect that if it hasn't already started to happen, that we're going to begin having discussions about the next bond package. And if you look back at the 2017 bond package, economic development, which included housing, was $55 million. I would argue that based on how some of that was structured, it was probably more like 35. So that's 3% of a $1 billion bond package. So we could start there. And so then the question becomes, how do you spend it? And something that, there are a couple of things that I think are success stories in the single-family, on the single-family side right now. Number one is the bottom. There is, and the reason that I feel like that's a success story, a couple. One is the infrastructure's there. On traditional infill lots in the city of Dallas, you go and drop a house in and the street doesn't change, sidewalks don't change, lights don't change, it's the exact same thing. So that infrastructure isn't addressed, just the house. And in the bottom, we addressed from an infrastructure perspective and we're a little more comprehensive. Now, it took a long time. I believe the developers spent probably eight years or so accumulating those lots, but nonetheless, a win's a win. The other that I think can be very instructive is a recent project that received council approval at the last voting meeting with Greenleaf Ventures. And one of the things that we haven't done a significant amount on the affordable side within the city of Dallas is development of a bunch of houses at once, say 50, 60, 70 units. And so Greenleaf is using $1.8 million to do infrastructure on a vacant plot. And that can be very instructive. That's what, that's what our suburban, really ex-urban neighbors are doing. And so I think those, the bottom and Greenleaf Ventures can be very instructive on how we approach single-family. And then finally, I think there are probably some tactical tools in the toolbox that we could perhaps add to make the development process on single-family, even those infill lots, a little bit faster. For instance, permitting, which we've certainly, as a city addressed, home designs. And one of the things that builders in particular struggle with and developers will struggle with is you've got to get, you need plans and you need renderings. You've got to have something to build. And upfront, for some of the builders that were in some ways trying to help get started and see affordable entry and leverage affordable as an entry point for their businesses, that would be really helpful. So what I'm trying to describe really is cutting down the carrying cost at the beginning of the project, and that would be extraordinarily helpful. I said I was going to hit on item seven, so I'll do that really quickly. And that sort of addresses one of the things that I have jotted down on the focus on single-family homeownership, which is equitable access to capital. And I'm thinking about it not just from the homeowner's perspective, but from the entire ecosystem. So the home builders that are in the community, the subcontractors that are in the community, the lenders that are in the community. And so the solution there is a fund. It's an affordable housing fund and probably the Economic Development Corp. is going to be better positioned to do that. That's a real win. But certainly having a fund available with flexibility, which is probably why the Economic Development Corp. is better positioned to do it, but a fund to support affordable housing. Thank you.
Hey, Ken, you know, we've been working together on trying to get some stuff in East Dallas kind of going.
Yeah.
I think if you go to, is it number, the next slide? Number 11.
Yeah.
How, that is the big one because you can have a fund, you can change your policies. But, and we've talked about this, zoning is political.
Hmm, oh, yeah.
And if you, and if you have to do any zoning changes. So what, how, that is the big, I mean, it's going to take courage from this body to say we have to do what's right.
I think so. You know, I talk about messaging with developers a lot and what I mean by messaging is, you know, stay away from the term affordable housing. It's an unfortunate reality, but staying away from that term. And I encourage developers to use the terms like first responder housing or teacher housing. Yeah, because the reality is, I mean, at this point, affordable is kind of the middle market and inside the city limits of Dallas, which are your teachers and nurses and, you know, first responders and everything else. So I think, you know, part of it, part of it is engaging with the community to the extent that they understand that affordable isn't, isn't all low income and, but at the same time, to me, it's the right thing to do.
Yeah.
And that's why I hunker down here and do this affordable housing stuff. I was born here. I've seen things that Jerry's talking about and, you know, it's not right. So at some point, you just kind of have to go, well, I mean, what's the right thing to do?
Right. And I think that's, housing is housing, no matter what part of the high end, low end, people need housing.
Yeah.
And we need to take the politics out of it and be more of a humane, looking at it from, you know, human point perspective versus.
Well, you know, a mixed income isn't, isn't new.
No.
And it's certainly not unique. I mean, you know, you walk around Manhattan and, you know, the high income has to take the same subway as low-income folks. And there's a certain kind of camaraderie in that.
Right.
And.
You're all in it together.
Yeah. And, you know, I'm a big fan of mixed income.
Oh, I am too.
And because it's, we've got anecdotal reasons that works and there's research that shows that it works, but, you know, to me, that's the, ultimately, that solution, I think, and the single-family development, kind of like what you're doing in the bottom, you know, walk through a $400,000 house in the bottom. So I think those opportunities exist.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll take these two, if you can, limit to a minute. And we're going to, we're going to be back tomorrow and we'll be back Wednesday and we'll be back Thursday. So if you're not able to come down, then you can definitely join us online. This is an important conversation in one night.
Absolutely.
It's not enough time.
Don't worry, I'll be really quick. I try to be succinct. So in reference to your question, Councilwoman Blackman, about how do we ensure that this goes through? I don't, as a community organizer myself, I understand that certain issues, it's not important to attempt to change people's minds or try to bring new people into the conversation. But in order to move something that you all spent considerable money having great consultants and to address and acknowledge what we've all been saying, I think now is the moment not to go after people who would be confused by this policy or these recommendations, but to gather those who have been saying this in your district for some time, organize those individuals and have those individuals push this forward versus attempting to get into wordsmith conversations with individuals who may reject this no matter how it comes. Thank you.
Darrell?
Government Done Well came out of the crisis of the Great Depression. We got the Civilian Conservation Corps and the WPA. As long as we're putting public money into this effort, I think our money is more valuable than any market money ever will be. We need to demand and require that best practices are an integral part of this policy, not minimum requirements. Because the minute that you allow the minimum, that's typically what you end up getting. And that's where the real solution is. When we base it on what the European model for affordable housing and public housing is, remember that people like Le Cabozier was a world-renowned architect, made his career in public housing. So the fact that we're spending this kind of money for an impact that's going to be generational, we have to invest. And we have to look at this as an investment, not an expense. And when we require best practices in the housing that we're supporting, directly or indirectly, we'll get that when we allow corners to be cut, rules not to be enforced and that sort of thing, we get that as well. So hopefully, this will be a positive thing for my ending statement to you all tonight.
Thank you very much, Darrell. I want to thank each of you who came down tonight. We opened up City Hall for a reason because oftentimes, when we have these type of discussions, it's important for people to look at people on the eyeball. So thank each of you for coming down and being here. And we invite others who are online or may not have been able to make it tonight to come tomorrow night. If you can't come, come Wednesday night. If you can't make it Wednesday night, come Thursday night. We want to hear from you directly. Those who are online, continue to share the word about these important town hall meetings. Your voice needs to be heard and should be heard in this process. I want to, I want to thank our consultants for being here. We've been discussing this for quite a while and it's here now. And so thank you for being here. We're right on point with our timeline. Hopefully, we can stay on point with that. And so I want to just say, continue to make your voice heard, whether physically or virtually. We will have other forums available for input. Councilmember Blackman has given her email address. Mine is KCThomas, KC dot Thomas at DallasCityHall dot com. Feel free to share that information. Please take time, if you took the time to come down, if you took time to come online, take the time to read the full report. I must admit, I was pleasantly surprised and not having known your work in the past, but I was pleasantly surprised, the level of depth of the work and the research that was done and the recommendations that have been presented. Take our opportunity to read the report and it is now 7:33 and we're going to adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Continue to be safe.